I got a picture of the state. Everyone, I just gave them a list of all the school systems. They're gonna send us, when we pay them a little bit, they'll send us all. Hawkins, so, it's a risk for cash. It's up to them. I mean, I think it's like fifteen cents a page. So do I put you all in.
We'll go ahead and go to work sessions. Board, Mr. Hughes will not be here tonight. We've got a lot on our agenda to do in the work session. Then it's a fairly long agenda for the actual board meeting itself. So this time I'll bring it over to Mr. Kowalski.
Good afternoon, Board. I have included several items this afternoon that I didn't want to discuss, bring you up to speed on, and welcome any questions as I go through these items. But I will have a work session agenda, and then we'll go into the regular board agenda before our board meeting. So before you, you will have your work session agenda. The first thing on that agenda is the TSBA Fall District Meeting. As you all are familiar with that, you've attended that before. We will actually be hosting that for this fall. And it is going to be on August the 28th at Westridge High School, and it will begin at 4:30. They are changing the format of the Fall District Meeting. It will not have a meal with it this year. But what they're asking us to do is serve heavy hors d'oeuvres. So I do think we will do a great job hosting this. I look forward to that. I look forward to our board hosting that and Westridge High School. And I think that will be a neat event for Sullivan County Schools. If you'll notice, you have a packet of documents at your place. And we're gonna start going through those right now. The first document is a document titled Browner Road Annexation. It's been a long time since I've gotten any update of annexation from the City of Kingsport, but this one did come December 16th, and I'm bringing that to you this evening. This is to advise that the Kingsport Board of Mayor and Alderman approve the Browner Road Annexation located at 206 Browner Road, Sullivan County Tax Parcel during their August 23rd, 2022 meeting. Please find a map and supporting documents attached for annexation area. This property was zoned City of Kingsport R3, which is loaded into the apartment district during the annexation process. If you turn to page two, you'll see that this property is highlighted on this map. It's actually located very near what is the water tower there near Westridge High School, off there at Browner Road. So I don't know what the size of the property is. I don't know what the anticipated number of apartments are that would be going in there. But I did wanna bring this to your attention as part of annexation so that you're aware of that. The next thing on your work session agenda is the Sullivan East Turf. I don't have any documentation to give you there. I was out there last Friday, and I did visit the softball field and the baseball field. Those are, the baseball field is ahead of the softball field at this point, or it was as of last Friday. Both of those are moving along and should be ready for the start of the season. There's no practicing on those fields right now with the condition that they're in. But I do anticipate those will be ready for the beginning of the season. Do you have anything further to add to that, Charlie? Okay. But it does look nice with what I saw Friday. The next thing on my agenda is McGriff Insurance Renewal. And this is for your information, and I wanna make sure that I keep the board apprised of things that are happening. And this gives you, the first page gives you a timeline, timeline. And this is in regards to our property liability and workers' comp insurance. I was called, I was invited, Ingrid and I, to a meeting on Friday, December the 9th with Steve Hartwell and McGriff Insurance and others at the courthouse. We attended the meeting on Friday, December the 9th, and got the information as it pertained to the insurance renewal. The insurance renewal was from December 31, 2022 through December 31, 2023. So I think it's important for you to know this timeline as to when we were notified. Mr. Bailey in his email communication with me says that's also when he was notified. Sorry. He says that's also when he was notified as well. So I want you to have this information because this insurance has been approved and moving forward, but you didn't have the opportunity to have a say-so with this. So I feel like I need to apologize. But then, on the other hand, it is what it is, so to speak. But what I've included here is the email communications showing the back and forth with the information. I've also included at the bottom of this page how that has increased over the past four years. Our increase this year, and I've noted that as you get on over here, was about sixty-seven thousand. So in my opinion, that was, it was sixty-three thousand, four forty-six, I'm sorry. That is significant and something that I do wanna make the board aware of. And it will be something that we're having to handle as of right now because this premium, this invoice has already come to us so that we have to, we have to pay this. I did check with some other school districts as far as what kind of premiums they have. And most of the surrounding school districts are with Tennessee Risk Management. I don't know why it's turning off. I apologize. With Tennessee Risk Management. And to be perfectly honest, their premium is much higher and much lower deductible. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollar deductible, and they're looking at anywhere from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars deductible. So it's a big difference. But there were some questions earlier when we had, one of our employees had an accident in a county car and the replacement, you know, we weren't, we didn't get any replacement value on that. So there were some questions, and I just wanna make sure you all have the information that I have in regard to our building contents and our liability and our workers' comp. And, you know, I also found that the increase was even more concerning to me in that we had relieved ourselves of property, the block middle and elementary locations as well as the colonial heights location. So even with downsizing some on our property, we still have that much of an increase. I do have the proposals that came, that we were presented with that day. But things move very quickly, and because we do, we are a part of the county's policy. So those, there were some decisions made very, there were some decisions made very quickly. And frankly, I'm just providing you information.
Is the hundred thousand dollar deductible per incident or is that over here? One of those questions, car wreck happened.
Yes, that is per.
So each claim then has a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Do we know for sure that they actually took those properties off? Or is that something, I guess, I'm sorry. Do we know for sure that they took those properties off? We already checked.
Yes, sir, they did. I have the, that is included in this manual. And yes, I can tell that definitely those have been, been removed.
You have one question about that. I noted in that, in this packet that the finance office, Mr. Bailey wanted the building to be broken down between schools, highways in general. But did they ever, have we seen anything that actually breaks that down?
Yes. Yes, the invoice.
Okay.
And as far as, well, let me just say to you, I need to respond to that differently. I apologize. The only significance there that I have, and I included the invoice in your packet for us, is in this, which I have one copy of, and you all are welcome to review that. There is a breakdown for the different departments.
Okay. Well, and is the county, is the sheriff's office a part of the general then?
Yes.
Were there similar increases across the board?
There were increases across the board. I can't say if they were the same or that similar, but there were increases. And they did elect, they did, it comes off without touching it, I'm sorry.
I just make it my case for last month.
I know, yeah. And you're right, and I need to, I need to meet with Dr. May and Gary and see what we can work out in here. I can't tell you if the percentages of increases are the same or not. But this is, it affects our current year view of budget. It will also affect next year's budget. But I think the most, the most challenging piece for me is we don't get this information until December. It's like so many other things that we deal with in the budget process, such as the city council split. We don't know where we are on that till March. There's things that happen throughout the year that impact our budget that were not always a process.
Do you know if the total premium went up four hundred percent like it did for us? Versus 2021, it was a hundred and nineteen thousand for the entire county. Did the premium go up that much percentage wise?
I can't answer that for the entire county. I don't have that information with me, or I don't know that I have it at all.
The first time we were aware of anything, I think, was probably two years ago. The cops got a bill for about four hundred thousand. And that city got it drastically at the time. We were here before. So it jumped drastically then, and we didn't understand why.
How does that coincide with the timing of the financial management?
That's, that's it.
Okay.
You just hit the nail on the head.
That's what I thought, too.
Yes.
I mean, 'cause that's a decision they have complete control over, right? Okay. But that's a big difference.
And question we asked two years ago, could we put this out for bid? And the first answer is yes. Looking at surrounding systems, we may not come out ahead by doing that. But back in the early nineties, if I remember correctly, it was one time ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my life was.
I believe back in the early nineties, the premium was paid totally by the county. And there was a complaint, legal complaint from the cities concerning money being paid for school buildings, and the cities did not receive any premium for hers. And actually, there was a settlement, I believe, and I think it was 1991, 92, on immigrant. The cities actually got money as an agreement because of this. Now that's priced broken out where the schools have to pay. In fact, in the early nineties, the county paid for the entire premium. And after that lawsuit or legal, whatever it was, the schools had to start paying for sheriff. It went up drastically, if you can see that our agreement could go on. And that's my, my opinion.
And that, in my discussions with other school districts, theirs mirrors much just of what ours is. They pay back to their county government for that premium.
All right. I have, I have a question, and this is just for clarification because I'm not really understanding this. So you're basically saying that McGriff sends Sullivan County a bill, and let's just say it's one million dollars. The, the county courthouse votes have the right to then give it up, how they choose between Highway Department, Sheriff's Department, Department of Education, et cetera, as to who pays what of that million dollars. No, McGriff does that?
So what happens is when we go to the table, McGriff presents the group of Sullivan County with different options. Do you wanna keep the same coverage with the same deductibles you've had in the past? Do you wanna change that? If you want to stay the same, this is what the premium is. County government pays the premium for all the departments with the exception of the school department. And we are, we are paying our own. When the county government pays their portion, they're paying for the sheriff's department and the highway department and the local government department.
And it's.
And that goes back to what Mr. Jones was saying.
Sure. I mean, it's a decision about whether you wanna share versus not share with the cities so therefore you don't help the school district.
And the point, I think, is based on the number of employees that we have plus the number of staff, staff footage that we have. So it's obvious that we have the highest number of employees. We also have the highest staff footage that we are responsible for. And it goes back to what Matthew said, about sharing with the cities. And our board response to us, a million dollars.
Well, McGriff is the one to decide on how much the school department pays.
They don't have a final say-so, I don't think. I think the county has to accept the recommendation. And I have seen some emails where McGriff was the one to send out the percentages.
And I understand what you're saying now, that in answer to those, yes, those ones have come back and say, this is, yes.
And some of it's based on the number of complaints, claims that have been filed the previous year or the previous couple of years. And if we have more than that, our toes up. On the workers' comp especially, we might just start. Access Workers' Comp is eighty-nine thousand. One of those pages, two pages down the back, I believe, it's on the invoice.
And basically, what they're looking at as well is replacement costs, construction costs. Everything's higher now than it was a year ago or two years ago. So, you know, that's one of the reasons for increases as well. So contents are more, and we experience that every day with our current expenditures when we're making any type of purchases. We're spending more for an item now than we did a year ago or even before that, so. I brought this to you because I think it's important that you have this information and know that this is something that we deal with in our own budget, and we'll, you know, we'll deal with it. And, but it's significant because it just continues to increase at a high rate. All right. The next thing I want to get into is ESSR projects. And I have given you all quite a bit of information. We're actually just gonna start at the beginning there and try to go through these projects. You'll recall that in August, in September, we talked about our ESSR funds and how we wanted to move forward with the expenditure of those funds. You all looked at roofing projects, and you also looked at HVAC projects. Denise West had come back and made a presentation to you about some work that they had done on our, on our buildings. And in doing so, we had our projects, and we had those ranked. And I gave you a spreadsheet with that information. So the first document you're going to see should be Sullivan County Purchasing Department Update. It's a two-page document. At each one of our Financial Management Committee meetings, which we meet monthly, Chris Davis always prepares a document similar to this that she presents to the Financial Management Committee. I wanted to share this with you because it's pretty comprehensive, and it's comprehensive of everything going on in the county, but particularly with what our, how our projects are going. So the first thing I want to bring to your attention is on page two. And on page two, at the top part of the page, you'll see East High School Sewer Project, which is the ARPA grant. This is a grant that's coming through local government, not through the school department. And this, there's a contract that's been executed, and a purchase order has been issued to Madder and Craig for Engineering Services. And again, this is coming from the mayor's office through those grant dollars that they have. Status is the engineering documentation for easements is fifty percent complete. And I have included all those easements in your packet. Documentation will be completed and ready to submit to the county attorney in December for preparation of easements. So that is happening as we speak. I don't have a timeline for that project to begin or even what a completion timeline would be. But it is great news to think that East High School would be moved onto the sewer that was created by when we built East Middle School. So that is happening, and that is happening at the expense, both through county government, through the commission, and through this grant. So many, many, many thanks to the commission for making this available to East High School and for this happening for us, because this is a huge endeavor. So the next part that you'll see there midway down the page is purchasing projects for the Department of Education. And with each one of these projects, you probably will have some information in your packet. So we're going to move to, the first thing you'll have is a spreadsheet, which is the same spreadsheet I presented to you all earlier. The only thing I've added to this spreadsheet is at the bottom underneath the graphic for Sullivan County Schools, you'll see some information there. I've also added beside our projects, where we had those ranked on either side of that graphic, some additional information that may have a cost figure for those that are coming in. So I hope that, that I've made this easy to follow as we go through here. So if you'll just kinda lay that, that one to the side, you can see as we go through these projects where we are. So the first one on this list is the access driveway to Westridge High School. I have no documentation with that other than to say the bid opening is to be determined in spring of 2023. Permit applications will be submitted to the state in January. Those have been submitted, and those fees have been paid as we speak. Number two, and if, and if you have questions at any time, just stop. Otherwise, I'm just gonna continue through these projects. I also have Charlie here to answer anything I can. And hopefully, between the two of us, we're gonna have an answer. Left City Elementary School Cooling Tower Replacement Project. Status is contract with Holston Engineering has been executed. The bid opening was October 25th, and the status is it was awarded to HVAC Incorporated, and it came in at three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I know everything was, everything's on its way up in pricing. Was that close to what we thought?
None of it is close to what we thought. And I, I wish, I wish we were closer. I wish, you know, Denise's figures had been closer, but we're, we're off. And you can see on the right side of the graphic, I'm gonna go back to our spreadsheet. You can see down there, I've got Left City Cooling Tower, three hundred and thirty-four HVAC Incorporated. So that's how this is gonna kinda go. That's been awarded. Charlie, have they done any work yet? No, they haven't started yet, but it has been awarded and should be moving ahead.
Evelyn, I'm not trying to slow us down, but.
No, that's okay.
In, in the old sheet under that, I think we included more than just the cooling tower. But I mean, I think we had seven fifty. So I mean, I know it has more, there'll be more work on top.
We did, and there's more, we had more to that because we were looking at the HVAC on the third floor. I think it was four classrooms.
Second and third floor, yeah. Okay.
The next item on the, on the list is a biggie, and I actually included that on our agenda this evening. And I'm going to spend some time with this piece. And this is the Sullivan Central Middle School HVAC Control and Switch Gear Replacement, which we've had slated for ESSR two for a long time. We've talked about this project for a long time. This project has been, contract was executed, Holston Engineering and Engineering Services for two fifty-three, six twenty. Project estimate was four point two million dollars. It was advertised November 13th, and the bid opening was December 6th. Now, I think you can see on your paperwork there, and I'm gonna, you've got the bid sheet for Left City Cooling Tower. We'll just turn that one over. But I want you to look at the bid sheet for Sullivan Central HVAC. And right before that, I've got a sheet in there, gives you the number of calendar days between now and when ESSR three ends in June of 2024. You can see that we had three bidders on Sullivan Central. Of those three bidders, one was Four Seasons at seven point one million. HVAC was seven point four, close to seven point five million. And Norwell came in at six point, close to seven, six point seven million. Now, the, the real issue with Central, and it's starting to be an issue with several of our projects, is the number of days for completion. And as you all can see down that column, the low bid, which was six point seven million, is five hundred and forty-five days. That's beyond what we have available to us for completion. As you can see, we started tomorrow, which this job won't start tomorrow. We have five hundred and thirty-six days. So of these bids, the next lowest one was Four Seasons at three hundred and sixty-five days, which is, we can, we can make three hundred and sixty-five days. So we, we met, and we, we discussed this, and we thought, are there ways to try to bring down the cost on this project? And some of the things that we talked about, and that even the engineers came back with, and we did have the engineers at the table with us, is that we could potentially deduct pieces and parts of this, like, do we wanna deduct the, the pool as far as putting the new system in there? We had some equipment in there for the Botec, the NX building. Also, the bipolar ionization equipment, and that sheet is what you're looking at there for Four Seasons. We looked at several things, and then the, the other piece, and the piece that I brought back, was even if we chose to do, to take some things off of this to try to bring the bid down, we're looking at having to, number one, rebid the project, which is gonna take a significant amount of time. And as you can see, the clock is ticking on us here. And as you can see, the clock is ticking on us here. And the other piece of that was the expectation as of January one is that there's going to be price increases. I do know that Trane put out price increases for January the twelfth. So my thought and Charlie and, um, Michelle, uh, was there and we discussed and I, you know, basically, I'm not sure we save money by rebidding because of the possible increases that we're going to be facing. Plus, we're going to lose a good thirty to sixty days of the timeline if we do rebid. So my, my motion to the board tonight, or my request to the board tonight will be that we go with the Four Seasons bid of seven point one and that we move that into S R three to give us that additional time. And quite frankly, we'll have to do that because of the allocation of the monies. Um, because we don't have seven point, um, one million sitting in S R two to, to complete this project. And that we move some of those projects that we had slated for three into two, that we just switch back and forth with this, some of these smaller projects, these, uh, the Catherine Roofing Project, the Rock Springs HVAC Project, some of those to try, you know, try to make this work. The two projects that I heard loud and clear, or I thought I heard loud and clear from the board was, Central Middle, the HVAC, and also Mary Hughes, the HVAC and the roof there. Uh, we'll get to the Mary Hughes roof here in just a minute. So
If, if memory serves, as we were talking about it and we were going through the process, we didn't allocate everything. There was about eight million, I think, left. That was going to hopefully cover the gaps. So am I right? Was it eight billion-ish?
And that's in S R three? And yes, you are, you are right. There were several million left in there that we were holding on to to see how these bids came in because we knew that it could escalate on us in a hurry. And those were, uh, you know, and in the end, um, quite frankly, this is moving much slower than I anticipated as far as getting bids and this information back. The number of bidders who are bidding on projects are not, not as many as we had hoped. We have lots of bidders who show it for pre-bid meetings, but then don't actually place a bid when it comes time to place a bid. They're, they're dealing with the same challenges that everybody else is dealing with and that is having people who are on staff and being able to complete these projects. But this, I wanted to share this information with you and see what, what feedback I got because I think, uh, with your approval, if, if the board should approve that we do the Central HVAC by going with Four Seasons, which is not the lowest bidder, but because they are the only bidder who can complete the project within the timeline, we can go with them. And you're going to Excuse me? The deadline on S R two is June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
S R three is?
June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
So you've got a real option against S R three.
Yes. Um, we're getting some, uh, and you'll see some more information as we go through. Not, you know, not all of it's great, but we do see that some of our projects can be completed by June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and we can move those. Whereas we thought they would fall in three, we can move those to two. And, um, I don't like using this word, but I'm going to supplant what we had designated. I saw that look there. What we had designated for Central HVAC initial two.
We're just trading.
We're just trading money from two to three.
The sad part is we knew going in it was going to be expensive when we were looking at that. That was our whole goal, was not spending all eight million dollars for those who just want to go back home. So, I mean, I hate it. It's that big a chunk on one item, but that's the way it is. I have another choice.
It's a choice too. It's got to go. S R three and Four Seasons.
But we're getting, that's only, that's only option to make.
Sir, any questions about the Central HVAC? And this is work, we have been assured, this is work that can go on while students are occupying the building. These units are, will be located on the outside of the building. So this is definitely work that can be ongoing.
What would be the biggest surprise thing for Four Seasons this year?
Well, they're waiting on whether I get approval from this, from the board this evening or not. Because it's, it is not the low bid, so this is a, a, um, an action that this, that we, that the board will have to take. But we do have documentation from Holston Engineering that will suffice for the reason that we haven't selected the low bid and that is because of the number of days. And additionally, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier to rebid the project and make exceptions or concessions, even one to what we bid earlier. I'm not real sure that we're going to come out again because of increases.
Sadly, we, we have to come to the realization of this is money we have a timeline, we have to spend it. And if we continue to, you know, jockey around and we lose thirty days here and thirty days there, we'll work ourselves in well, we can't get it done at all. So we only have five months and we've seen how things get dropped and slowed down and wait on the switch here and the switch there, so it's not that great of an option. But at the same time, if we're willing, it's open now, I think we, uh, have to.
Sir?
I know we're not hurting, but if anybody's in agreement.
Are there, are there any other questions about Central? And you'll see that I have actually put that on the spreadsheet as well. And I've got down there, uh, under the, underneath the graphic, the HVAC. One thing I would bring to your attention is that's, with going with this bid, that includes everything that was in the initial bid, which is the pool, uh, the ionization unit, and also I believe it's six classrooms, Charlie, in the annex, at the annex. It's the six classrooms on the opposite end. There's two on the bottom floor and four on the top floor. So that includes everything. All right, the next item on here is the Central Middle School Track and Resurfacing Project. That contract was awarded, uh, the construction estimate, you can see there's two sixty-one, four. The bid is ten to fully scheduled for January twenty-three and the bid opening February fifteen. I do have some supporting documentation there in your, in your documents. It includes some survey as well as some information from Panrush West. And, uh, you can see that, uh, what we have allocated in S R two will be sufficient, it appears. And, um, I think Ms. West has some pretty good figures, pretty solid figures on this one. So that work should start pretty quickly this spring and they know that this project has to be completed by June thirty. Now that does, um, relocate the Central Middle Track Program to, and ride to West Street. We have a nine-leaf track, state-of-the-art track there. Plenty of rain, uh, plenty of collaboration between the middle school and the high school coaches. And we'll make that, uh, we will certainly make that work while this work is going on at Central Middle School. But this will give that situation a new track and, um, something that we definitely need there. We, Charlie's guys have already, uh, taken up the old track surface, so it is, we've done some of the work ourselves trying to get ready for this project. Any questions about the Central Track? Okay, the next item on your list is the Sullivan Heights Middle School Chiller Replacement. That bid opening was today, right Charlie? And Charlie and I have it discussed and I don't have that paperwork in front of me, so
I didn't.
I'm not sure how that came in. Um, do you have it? How many bidders did we have, Charlie?
Two. We had three. Three came to the pre-bid. Only two bid it. I'll give you an example. Uh, a couple of years ago, I got a direct quote from a company on replacing that, those chillers. Uh, it was just a little over a quarter of a million dollars. The low bid came in today at nine hundred eighty-four thousand, but there's a six hundred and ninety-day timeline on it. So that's way past, or three, and we only had two bidders. Uh, there is a big price increase according to everybody coming up day after tomorrow. I don't know if they padded their bid for that or not. I have no clue. You know what I'm saying? But on the flip side, those are train units and that big chiller down there, we are not capable of working on some of those big units. And we have a contract with Trane, a service contract with them, which is about thirty-four thousand dollars a year is what we have on that. So that, but we got the small chiller now is down. It's basically not working. It's, it was a used piece of equipment when it came in, apparently from what I've been told from years ago. But that bid did open today. We had two bidders. Uh, the low bid was nine hundred eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, with a six hundred and ninety-day completion. The other bid, the other bid came in just a touch over a million, but it had a six hundred and sixty-day completion. It was just a few, but it's still six hundred days and that won't make the S R three, if my math's correct. We only got like five hundred and some days. So it
Okay, so as you can, you can see what's happening with timelines here, what our, our challenges are.
And I don't know what brand, they didn't specify what brand they were putting in. Uh, Trane is what they're now, but it did not specify specifically a train unit. I have a personal feeling what maybe each one submitted, but I don't know. I didn't have that documentation and I don't know that they put it in their documentation.
Did you say it was six hundred and forty days was the least one?
Six sixty.
What was the other one?
Six hundred and ninety. The low bid was nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Six hundred and ninety day is what they put on their timeframe. The other bid was one million and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty days. So it's about a forty thousand dollar difference.
Can we bid that, did we have in our, your timeline of three hundred and sixty-five days or?
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it was in, I don't know. I don't know. That was the engineering company that rep, spikes up on it. I'm not, I can't answer that question.
All right, and that's information that just came today. So we have that. At the bottom of that page, you can see Sullivan Heights Middle School, eight rooftop HVAC units. If you'll turn the page, you'll see that, um, uh, that, we estimated that project at a little over one point two million. Uh, the bid was advertised December twenty-first. The pre-bid was January fifth and the bid opening is January the nineteenth, no?
The rooftop units?
Yes.
No, the, the pre-bid is tomorrow.
Okay.
January fifth was the chiller.
Okay, so she's got the wrong dates on this one.
Okay. We're having the pre-bid tomorrow at one P M.
And when's the bid? Is the nineteenth correct?
I don't know that I got that date down. It, it's possible that might be the date of the bid. I'm not sure on it, but I do have the pre-bid tomorrow.
Well, I'm not sure. She, I just know that on this sheet, on what she gave us, it was, pre-bid was tomorrow, but you're saying it's January the eleventh? I mean that the pre-bid was January fifth, but you're saying it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
So I don't have any information to give you on that one as of yet. You can see that the next one listed is the Left City HVAC. The bid opening on that is not even until March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. We put, um, actually I put the West Ridge Botec Annex HVAC Replacement on hold just because of the figures that I was seeing from these other projects. The next one is the Mary Hughes Elementary Roof Replacement and Facial Repair. We had the architect, or the architect contract was executed. We had a construction estimate there of a total project of four hundred and twenty. The bid was advertised November twenty-seventh and the bid opening was December fifteenth and you do have that bid tabulation right there. You can see that we only had one bid come back in. It was for one point three million dollars at a rate of two hundred and six days. You can see that we had the, uh, couple of alternates there. We talked about this one, um, for quite a while. In that, um, how we, the construction company, or the, the company Dixie Roofing came back and, uh, or these other companies, the reason that they didn't bid, they were saying that they, there was more construction than they anticipated because of the fascia and the condition of the wood. So they backed off because they felt like they were a roofing company and not a construction company. So in talking about this, we looked at the possibility of rebidding this project in hopes that the bidders, that we could have bidders who might come back and have, uh, include subcontractors in their bid the next time. And we also opened it up to say not only metal, but shingle, to see if that helped us in. So we were looking at rebidding Mary Hughes and she felt like she could turn that around pretty quickly when we talked to her the other day. Would you add anything to that, Charlie?
No, uh, did you mention that we had five contractors, five bidders came to the pre-bid? One of them, when you mentioned the Davis Bacon Act, they just automatically said no. The others, we went back and asked them why they did some of them and it was because of the fascia has so much. Remember, Mary Hughes is in the historical district also, okay? They did not do that. We come up with that initial cost. I went back and found the documents when it was re-roofed and how many squires or shingles it took based on today's, what was today's prices a few months ago. At about two hundred dollars a square and that's how we came up with that, plus, you know, the fascia and stuff. But, you know, that's, that's how it came out. But we're hoping that we get back because using federal funds and only one bid, it's kind of hard to say that you've done your work. And if we do it again, you get one bid, then you've done your due diligence. You've, you've attempted to get more than one bid. But we're hoping a construction company will bid it that has more carpenter work and then they would serve it out to a roofer. Can't say that that will happen, but we're hoping it will be. And I don't know, most companies are telling me that the metal roofing, there's not a lot of difference in the price. Maybe a little cheaper on metal, but that'll be seen, okay?
How much older was that on the roof?
I know it's four, it's like, it's almost quadruple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four hundred and forty versus one point five million.
We had two point five. That place back.
Four twenty.
Four twenty was our project estimate. So this has given you all some ins- So this has given you all some insight to what, what we're dealing with as we go through these projects and the...
Could that, would he be able to answer two money if the cost figures come in?
If the figures come in, yes. We'll, we'll push anything we can into two if we can get the figures in there and it makes our number of days.
Chris, Chris Davis did have that in his peaceful paper Sunday for review. I saw that in, by friends who was out there asking for review.
So we should have that, um, I feel like, I think she told us when we talked about that two weeks, that they turned that around after the bid appeared in the paper. So we should have that day on that by our next board meeting. All right, the next item on your list is the Mary Hughes HVAC. Uh, you can see that, um, that is still in developing the project bid schedule. The Indian Springs HVAC is still in development. The Indian Springs Elementary Roof Replacement, Architect is working on the project cost estimate and fee proposal, which I've included here for you all. You'll see that that's dated December thirteenth. And if you look at the Indian Ring, Indian Springs Elementary Roof Roof, um, at the top, you'll see six hundred thousand between the one hundred and fourteen, the four oh eight and the seventy-eight. And then the, uh, total up sum fee based on construction budget for the architect at thirty-six, that's six hundred and thirty-six thousand. Is where that one is coming in as a projected. Uh, that's all the information I have there on that one. But that one hopefully is moving, moving along. The next item is the Left City Elementary Roof Replacement. Uh, I don't have any additional information except what you see here. As is the same with the Milliperry. Charlie has been meeting and taking the architects. Uh, we're working with two different groups, Kang Rush West and also Thompson and Litton. And, um, he has taken those groups to the different locations. The next one you'll see is the, should be the Emmett Partial Roof Replacement Project. You'll see the Thompson and Litton documentation for that one. And you can see down there that they are estimating the construction cost is estimated at one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And add to that the architectural cost of ten thousand six hundred, that's coming in about a hundred and sixty-eight six. That's prior to bid though. The next one you'll see is Kettering. Again, seventy-six thousand construction, forty-five hundred architect for a total of eighty thousand five hundred is what they're projecting. Uh, we don't have, uh, information yet on HVAC projects for Rock Springs and Milliperry. The next thing on your list is, um, and you can see the next sheet I included there was on November the nineteenth. It was dated that how the HVAC projects had been awarded after going through a process of where they were graded and gone before committee. The next thing on the list is Sullivan East High School Tennis Court Repair Resurfaced Project. This is for two of their four courts. Nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We are moving ahead with that out of S R two and that should work just fine. With baseline sports.
This, this might be something we discussed earlier, but only two of the four, or is that, or the other two just in really good shape or?
The two, the other two are in good shape. This will make those four in good shape, but in the long run, um, I would think at some point the board may even look into relocation of those tennis courts and maybe even adding to that. Or if left where they currently are, maybe adding two additional courts. But this will make four courts in good shape, but to be honest, we need two more at least there. It might need six. The next thing on your list is the water bottle filling stations. This is the E L C grant that was given to us, um, by the Sullivan County Health Department. And they are purchasing these, but I wanted to bring this to your attention because we will be adding. And I've included the bid sheet here. You can see that that bid came in with, um, that P A C H Z group. They got the bid, but that is an additional one hundred and thirteen water filling stations. So we should be able to have water filling stations everywhere that we want them. And this is courtesy of Sullivan County Health Department through, via their E L C grant. So that, uh, we've all, we've put that forward. The next thing on the list is Bigfoot Wireless Speakers. Earlier, uh, early on with monies from our E L C grant from the Department of Education, we purchased speaker systems for Westridge and East Mill because those were our two primary locations that we designated as testing locations. Those have proven to be exemplary, exemplary pieces of equipment for our schools. Ms. Buckles has worked to make sure that we can, um, get a set of speakers now for every location in our school district in that we qualify to be a testing location for all of them. So what you see here is us using more of that E L C grant money to get every school in our district, a speaker system, which is extremely useful. It's portable. It works very well. And in case of an emergency, it has proven to be very, um, a very good piece of equipment to have. The last thing on this piece, on this information is Indian Springs Elementary School Playground Equipment. That is a, a school purchase in-house via P T A that is happening and it, it's just on this list. So that did, that took some time, but I felt like, you know, it's very worthy of an update for you all for several reasons. But most significantly is the timeline that we're up against with the number of days available. The rate of speed that these projects are moving. And the amount of money that the increases in costs that we're seeing for these projects. Anywhere from double to even sixty-six to seventy percent higher than what we even thought that we were looking at.
I noticed on several, maybe six or seven here towards the end, it says architect working on project investment fee proposal. I know that's a, a big task for them, but what's the timeline normally on that? Does it take weeks or is it, what's the, what's it on?
It can take anywhere from four to six weeks. And we are pushing. Um, I made several calls last week. Um, made, had several emails and, um, it's, it's concerning to me that, you know, what we're dealing with, but, um, I would ask if there's any questions in regard to the, those projects that I just went through. And I'm happy to, if anybody has questions that you come back and think of later, if you'll let me know, I'm happy to respond to those as well. Cause I know that's a lot of information when you see it for the first time. And the only thing that I'm going to be asking for as far as our agenda goes this evening is to move the Sullivan Central HVAC project into S R three and also that we accept the Four Seasons bid. All right, any questions before I go into our regular agenda?
I guess I do actually. I, earlier, Mr. Jones asked about the Mary Hughes project. And I think the project deadline was two hundred and twenty days, I think. And he asked about S R two, but S R two ends in a hundred and seventy. So I guess we could move with S R two. Am I right or?
Not unless it came, not unless it comes in differently. Yes, sir.
So as of right now, that people... So do we have anything that? Are we going to be able to use all the S R two money or, I mean, we still have one year projects with the timeline?
And that, that's a great question and a great cha, uh, I mean, it's a huge challenge. We're hopeful that these smaller projects, um, like the Kettering Roofing Project, we can move into two. That's currently slated for three. I would love to think that we can get the Rock Springs HVAC Project, which is a small project in the cafeteria, but I'm even doubtful about that now. I would love to have thought we could have gotten that into two. Um, you know, we, we may have to look at possibility of another project. Uh, that would be it. I hope by the time we have our next meeting, I have, um, a lot more information to give you. Uh, but this is what I have as of today.
On the Sullivan Heights, we put the two units that we bid at one point three million.
Two chillers, yes.
Is there any way to reduce it? Do we have that as two separate projects? At least get one of them in?
I don't think they, she won't let us do two separate projects. She would let us just do one project of one.
And they gotta be tied together within the other system, I think. And I don't think it'd work. Give you example of how long things taken. Last March, we awarded the bid to Indian Springs Rooftop Units in the Cafeteria. That bid was awarded last March. They just got put in last week. That's how long, it took till December to get them in. That's how long it took.
So in the HVAC system, it's kind of unrealistic for us to even do S R two now. Maybe we can hope and, you know, we sit back and wait until it's not looking good.
You know, my hope was roofing.
Now we're hoping to pitch in the deadline for S R two and three.
And that would be great, but it's not something that we're hearing anything about. And I don't think we're the only school district or municipality or county government or any group that's struggling with this kind of concern as far as getting work done and the availability of equipment, as well as the availability of interest to even complete the projects. Because the projects are multiple everywhere.
Do we need to start looking at some backup plans before we have some needs and?
And that, that's why I said that I hope that I have the remainder of the information needed at our February meeting so that we can, we can do that if not before.
Well, it's, it's, it's something that, I mean, you really may have to have a call meeting to, to not wait until that timeline, but those were, we're really hitting the wall. So if stuff comes in, you may have to do something quicker.
Charlie, is there any negotiations on that six hundred and sixty days for the south unit? That's a hundred and twenty-four days of low, what we have available, but.
They just read the bids today, did not talk with any individual, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if there could be any concessions or not, you know what I'm saying? And I think that's something that probably needs to be stressed to these people at bid. I think they're just giving them set plenty of time. I think we need to stress that we're under a timeline and if they can crunch it more, you know what I'm saying?
And I, but I, in my conversation, I do think it is in there, in the bid. I, I wish I, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't confirm it one hundred percent, but I do believe it's in there, those deadlines for expenditures of those funds and those documents.
Has there been any more clarification about whether it has to be spent or just committed?
That's a great question. We've asked that over and over again. Uh, we've gotten different answers, but the last answer we got was that it had to be spent. And that was during, uh, while we had some federal monitors here in December. We specifically asked that question. So I would love to have thought that if it was committed, it was, we were good because we could certainly commit to some of this. But we're being told now that it has to be spent.
This is all federal, so it means all the federal guidelines, but yeah, it seems like we could actually reach out to somebody. Even tonight, we're talking about spending a half a million dollars just to meet a deadline. And I mean, so it's, it's almost, uh, I mean, we have to do it, but at the same time, we only have to do it, but those are guidelines. Seems like they did work on that.
All right, if there's no more questions, I'm going to move into the board agenda. Um, the first, the first thing as we, um, start our coordinating this evening is I'm going to be asking the, during our moment of silence that we remember two individuals, one being our Sullivan East student, um, Aiden Mellemann from last week. And also, uh, some of you may or may not remember Coach Bobby Way. But, um, he was a longstanding coach in our school district that passed away last week. So, um, those two gentlemen, I will be asking that we, um, consider during our moment of silence in their presence. On the consent, on the consent agenda, uh, we have several needing minutes. We also have an M O U with H M G for work-based learning. This holds the medical group for our nursing students. We've had that, it's a renewal, um, agreement, so we have a good situation there. We have several field trip requests and also copy or lease for Indian Springs Elementary. In my communications to the board, I will be, um, announcing our graduation dates, which I sent to you in an email and asked if any of you had any concerns. I did not get any information, any concerns back. So I will be announcing those graduation dates this evening. I will also be, um, break to the forefront that school will be closed on next Monday in observation of Martin Luther King Day. And that is all schools closed, students and staff do not attend. This office will be open. And everybody will be here at work that day. They're all smiling at me. And then also on Monday, February the sixth, is our second parent teacher conference day of the year. Where students do not attend, but of course our staff will be at work that day, meeting with parents. What was it then? February the sixth on Monday.
Ask you, Martin Luther King Day, the State Department of Education, closed for them?
I think they are closed.
You guys will be able to, so you're actually?
It is on our calendar as a workday for this office. But the how, I'm sorry.
That's something we could make a motion to fix it.
You could, if you wanted to add another, um, holiday to, uh, twelve month schedule.
We're going to change the policy, but if you do, we prefer that policy.
Yes. Now, the, um, tonight during my comments, I'll also be recognizing our CPR instructor, instructors that have worked diligently in our school district to make sure that we have plenty of individuals that are CPR certified. And I'll get more into that as, as we get that recognition this evening. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business and that will be, uh, the first thing is the Jewel lawsuit. And I'm going to play catch-up here for just a minute with my paperwork. I don't know, um, how many of you will recall that Sullivan County Schools did take advantage and join in in the Jewel lawsuit. and join in in the Juul lawsuit, which has been going on for some time. This was brought about, the Juul was an e-cigarette maker who faced thousands of suits brought by individuals and families of Juul users, school districts, and Native American tribes. This week's settlement resolves those cases, which has been consolidated in a California federal court pending several bellwether trials. So I will be asking for a motion this evening in regard to that. But this is something that will have some monetary settlement for our school district with no strings attached. And I can't say right now what that amount is because we haven't been given that. But certainly maybe some dollars that could go toward some specific educational resources in regard to vaping, to vaping and some, some different things like that. So that is what the Juul lawsuit is.
That goes for new sound systems, too.
Yeah.
I would say smoke detectors in the, the college principal's room. The next, they are vape detectors, yes. We did have some in our school district, so certainly that money could be utilized for those as well.
I'm sorry, you said you were looking for a motion, a motion of what?
Well, the motion, I already have given the information to Mr. Spobbe. And he's very aware of the Juul litigation, so we'll, he'll bring that to the forefront. The next item is the surplus property, the Henry Harrow Road property that I brought to you in December. We didn't take any action, but I put that on the board again about for anybody that needs to have that refreshed. Since that came out in the paper, and I thank Mr. Waker for that article because that was got us some calls and emails in regard, there are, there are interests out there for that property. So I do, I, I want to revisit that this evening with the board and see if there's a motion that will come forth about moving forward with possible survey and looking at the property, if that is the board's desire. As far as I would see the Sullivan Heights pool, I put this on the agenda. It's not an action item, but it is an item that I want to update the board on and the community. The former company who had done some work investigating the pool at Sullivan Heights has come back to Charlie and is not interested in moving forward with that project any further. Correct, Charlie?
We had a company that come and dived down and evaluated, tried to find the leaks. They wrote up a report, they did find a leak in a valve in the drain of the pool. They fixed it and they come up with additional report. The only company that we were aware of that I could find at that time that it was the same company that done East High School a couple of years ago. That report was sent to them asking if they would give us a quote, a price on repairing that pool of what was found. And they was not interested, none at all. It's took me a while, but I have, I'm in contact with another company and I forwarded that report. He hasn't got back to me yet, but he said within the next couple of weeks, they may try to send somebody up here. They're out of South Carolina. And they would do their evaluation of it. I can give you some, we shut the pool completely down in November. We have checked it periodically, sometimes daily, at least twice a week. In two months, it has lost nine inches of water, which is about 19,000 gallons. And that's no one year what it was. So it's either we got up in the trough, the return lines, there could be a leak in it, okay? When it's, the circulation pumps are running. But as far as it just sinking on the, down by its own, we've lost about nine inches in two months, right at 19,000 gallons of water. That pool is 75 foot to 45 foot, so you can do the math. I don't know what they'll come up with, but I do know we need a new heater and probably some new, the new coronation system because it's pretty much the age of the pool and you know how chlorine eats up on a, a pool. So I don't know what they will come back with, but I'm expecting there not to be anything reasonable what we would think. I don't know.
So again, that's four, that's an update for the board. We are probably looking at putting this pool repair out for bid is where we've landed, especially if we don't get any feedback from this current company that will give us what we need.
And I'm thinking the cost will be required too, because if it go over the threshold, then it will have to go out of bid.
Right. Item number four is the Sullivan Central Middle HVAC, which is what I've already discussed this evening. I will be asking the board to entertain moving that to S R three and also accepting the four seasons bid for that project. The next item is item E Director's Contract, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones.
I have, I have a contract that I'd like to give you tonight to take on review. Mr. Carter may be here looking later for a meeting. He and I have met on this, we've talked about it, Mr. Cole looked at it and reviewed it. There's been a few additions since then. I'm going to share this copy, look it over and let me know then those things that need changed in it so that we have our next meeting, either a call meeting or regular meeting. We're having on the agenda as they go in the hour, so. I have to get your copy out this quickly, here's the highlights there. You'll notice some things in red. The items in red have been either changes that Mr. Carter and I have worked on together or it's changes that I found there as an other contract, where it might have a she which should be a he or something of that nature. On page one, any changes in the official start date must be approved by this board and accepted by the director. That's something Mr. Carter asked for, should we need to start before July 1st. But if he's just working on an individual day, then it'd be his total salary divided by 240, especially there in the second paragraph also. And on page two, if you look what we have read, he has to be relocated to Sullivan County by January the first of 2024. He asked for that date to be put in there so that there wouldn't be any question about his residency initially, I think I paid him October, maybe three or four months. And Mr. Cole used the word terminated rather than, I think I had the word voided in there, but terminated is the, is the word that goes in that if residency is not established by then. On page three, on benefits, we discussed the benefits and as outlined, he would receive the same benefits as all, as all employees in Sullivan County concerned in insurance, both medical, life insurance and so forth. Item six on page three, this is a relocation allowance of $3,500. That's not, that's not for our bids, it's just relocation allowance once he has established his official residency. On page four, membership dues, he wanted to specify which membership we paid for. And that's Childs and the American Association of School Administrators plus two local city groups. And these are pretty standard for all directors of schools. Would be one or two of those that's set up. And there on out, everything is pretty standard until he gets to page eight. On page eight, there's a couple of things that T S B A recommended that goes back, goes in the contract, item 22, paragraph 22, criminal background check. That's included there, that expense is on the board. T S B A did recommend that. And then any amendments, item 23, everything that is approved has to be in line, if there's any changes to the contract. And then paragraph 24 indicates that this is the entire agreement. So as you read that, look through and let me know if you find errors, let me know if there are suggested changes. There's a few of you that had sent me some notes. One thing that we discussed was the evaluation. Dr. Rouse had brought up at the last meeting, about two evaluations a year. He and I discussed that and we came up with a mid-year review, I believe the date somewhere in here.
December, last year December.
Last year December, that's.
Page six, 15.
Page six, okay. That's a, that's a mid-year review and then the final evaluation would be done by July the 31st, the formal evaluation. And the salary that's listed there under compensation, $130,000 a year. And on page two, item four, strategic planning, that one's a critical one that goes in most contracts and it's important for us to make sure we look at that deadline there of October 1st, that he have a proposal to us on strategic planning concerning test scores, instructional strategies and things of that nature. And we get on down the rest of our terms of nights, we'll see when that might even be a greater need, but we get on with that part of it. And then the compensation, as I said, is listed there. Any questions? Did you see that on the back? There's, that's a further along contract, he's had a copy of this several times, we made changes, Mr. Cole looked at, most of us have that nice page up there, we added those things from T S B A, actually doing what they recommended. Mr. Cole has the copy and he'll review that again to make sure there's nothing there. Mr. Carter has had that reviewed with his legal advisor, I wouldn't say as a term, he must have an advisor at the house that's looking at the contract. I'll try to entertain any questions about our procedures or, I met with him last Monday, had a long conversation with him and talked about various items that's in the contract, seen him draft a contract that we had written up originally. But he made some suggestions, I made changes that he suggested if we could, or a few things that we could not. One thing that's in there, and they did understand that part, sick days, he has possibly 236 sick days, wrote up with the T C R S, this Amity County and the State Department. By law, those days transfer with him. So when he comes in, he will have those days sickly that transfer with him. His vacation days that he has with State Department, those do not transfer by, by law. You don't transfer vacation days as personal days. But you won't notice, that's 230 here, but when he actually signs the contract and then we get all the paperwork completed, the State Department will show us that he has, I believe it's 232 days or about, sick days. And that's important to know that even though it's not listed over a number, he will have that, that benefit. And that happens to anybody who comes into the system. David, you came in, you probably had sick days that transferred with you, right?
I did.
So that's just what the law says about that. But that's important to, to notice.
Just curious, and I'm, I'm great with that number 15, so our personal evaluation, I think that's a very, very thing. Just curious about the timeline of it. Is that, I mean, it's only going to be here for four months when we start, or five months, I guess, whenever we start doing our evaluation? Is that kind of normal or is that quick? Or I'm just, I don't know, I'm just asking.
That's why he asked for just a mid-year review rather than a formal evaluation, because he didn't want to come on board without first and start having to bunch him in detail things. But it is normal to do a mid-year review. With teachers, we hire a new teacher, sometimes they get evacuated first month of school or even first or second week of school. It's, it's pretty normal.
And if I could just add to that again, my intent was never a got to. The intent is to help him grow and to help us as a school board unit be able to work with him. He can't change things nor fix things if we aren't telling him along the way about our expectations and what we want and what we needed him as a director. So I, I just felt like this was a way for us to all be on the same path going forward all year long, rather than waiting till July to, to make some corrections. And again, it, it can be as informal as we, oh, did I go wrong?
Well, if you mind me to learn, I had a conversation about this system. But don't forget.
It can be as formal or informal as we were choose that mid-year to bid. I just wanted there to be able to be some dialogue. And it, it not just be Dr. Rouse's concerns or Mr. Irisen's concerns or Mr. Spobbe's concerns, but we as a whole, because that's how, that's where our power is as a whole. It's not, it's not Mary Rouse and it's not Chairman Jones. It is us as a body. And I thought that was just an opportunity for this body to be able to help him grow. And we might say very little or do very little. That's the end.
And it's, it's important to note there too, that we will try to look with the evaluation before it actually happens. And I'll just hand out a form and say, here, fill this form out. It's critical that we all agree on that evaluation format. And T S B A has recommended form to the one that we use and some other. It's, it's pretty standard that we go on that version. And it is a two-year, at this time, it's a two-year contract that expires, I think, on June the 30th, 2025. Should he start earlier, it would still be a contract that expires on the 30th, 2025. It would just be a few days earlier or whatever.
Dr. Rouse, if you notice that it's only your microphone and mine microphone that does that, that was actually pointed at. Well, I didn't hear that, but I thought of myself.
That's because I'm on the bad side.
You will keep saying that, because that you will be.
Are there any other, okay, moving on, are there any other questions or comments or any other discussion that you all need to have with Chairman Jones prior to moving on to new business? All right, new business, I actually have three policies this month. One is a carryover from last month, which is policy 3.202, emergency preparedness. And Mr. Spobbe brought it to my attention last month, and I'm glad that he did, where on page one at the bottom, where it says medical emergency pandemic event, actually the policy from the, from T S B A does say flu. But I did go back and change ours to event because I do think that's a much better wording and much better information significance to have in this policy. So I did go back and make that change, but primarily what we're looking at in this policy is on the back page is the remote learning drills, adding those. And we discussed that last month. So I will be asking for this policy to be approved this evening on first reading. Actually, it's on second reading because we had first reading in December.
Okay, just want to make sure, I mean, with me looking at this, that's an internal thing. That's something that you guys are going to do to make sure, I mean, that'll kind of be invisible to students, even really at the school level, because they'll have to decide how they're going to do their own thing with those ones, is there all for you to?
Right. And it's, this is mandated, this comes out of public chapter 936, that we have to have these two drills, which I think it's pretty self-explanatory that we're not going to go into a situation like we do with other drills. You know, students aren't going to be asked to do one thing or another. It's just how do we handle that situation if it? It's just how do we handle that situation if it were to occur? Any questions on that one? The second one is, uh, policy three point two oh five, which is security. Districts may now include cybersecurity in their safety plans. Now, it says must now include. This will be included in the state level template. The districts are tasked with identifying how to keep these networks of technology safe from cyber attacks and other cybersecurity threats and incidents. This is coming out of public chapter three thirty-five. And I have included our Sullivan County Schools cybersecurity incident response plan in our procedures that go along with this policy. So I feel very confident that we are covered with what I have here, which has been orchestrated and devised by our technology department. And it does cover everything in the policy that says it needs, that needs to be covered. And I will be asking for approval on first reading this evening on that policy.
On page seven, it says communications specials, but there's another one on that one.
In, in our cyber? Yes. Um, communications policy on seven. We usually, not usually, but we have, um, that would be filled in. And with the person who is in, on our communications in our, um, excuse me, I just lost my train of thought. Our EOP. EOP. Thank you. Our EOP. So I can fill that in quite easily. Those change from time to time, but yes, we can fill those in very quickly. And our EOP is our emergency operations plan. So thank you, Ms. Buckles. We have an incident command structure with all that in there, so we can fit that in here. Uh, for some time, we did have, um, someone from outside of our school district who would actually come in and do a check on this. So this is not something that's new. This is something that we have for a little while, that we continue to, to develop. But I do feel, I feel pretty good and pretty confident about, uh, confident about what we have. Other, other items in this security policy that I've highlighted, uh, and this is again mirroring the TSBA policy, is that is, um, as soon as practical, but no longer than twenty-four hours when we have cases of vandalism, theft, building damage, and illegal entry. Also that I or the director of schools shall report all signing of such complaints when we are making charges or criminal charges. That must be reported to the board. We do have collaborative partnerships in our school district with other, um, security agencies within Sullivan County, most notably, uh, we have an MOU with the Sheriff's Department. And that works very well. And that is highlighted in this policy as well. But you can see on the bottom of page two that it is now a requirement to have this cybersecurity procedures in place. And I, I feel very confident that we have that. The third policy that I have is alternative education is six point three one oh nine. Bear with me just a minute. Alternative education and as you can see at the very bottom of page one, the director of schools' destiny is not required to assign a student to the alternative school or program if the student committed one of the following. Is there a tolerance offense or an offense of violence or threatened violence? Or offense that threatened the safety of other students at the school? If the location of the alternative school or program is on the same grounds as the school from which the student was disciplined. Consideration to assign these students to the alternative program, alternative school or program, the director of schools' destiny on a case by case basis. That is, again, coming out of public chapter two twenty-nine. And really what this public chapter does is creates another exception regarding assignment to an alternative school or program. And I, I'm happy to report to you that when we have infractions of this significance, either one of two people in this office handled this situation. And that is either myself or Ms. Buckles. I think that we, um, I think what, how we handle these situations is very, um, considerate. We look at all these things. We look at possible placement in a different program from where they're located in their school. We, uh, our, our sessions with students in this case generally last anywhere from an hour and beyond. We meet with the student and the parents and we talk about several things. We not only talk about a disciplinary infraction, but we talk about grades, attendance. We talk about future. We talk about lots of different things. And I feel very confident in, um, we were already doing these things. But now the law's changed and it, it's a reflection in our policy. So I will be asking for this policy to be approved on first reading this evening. Next on the agenda are several resolutions and grants. These are several grants that we have been awarded. Thank you to the work of Debbie Magid. Uh, we have Central Middle School, which has received a career exploration and startup grant. They will be receiving twenty, twenty thousand. We have, um, Sullivan Heights Middle School Career Exploration and Startup Grant as well as the Expansion Grant. They'll be getting ten thousand per grant. Sullivan East Middle School with a startup and expansion grant, which is ten thousand dollars. And also the Spark Grants. Um, these are all grants that come through career technical education. And we've been very fortunate in receiving all of these grants, especially with our middle schools and the projects that we have going on there. We also have the Innovative School Law Grants, the ISM Grants, that we've spent quite a bit of time this week discussing with our high school principals and our middle school principals and looking at how we want to move forward with the expenditure and the, of those funds and the, uh, projects that we will be submitting to the state for hopefully for, um, approval later. And, um, again, just as a reminder for our middle schools, that is half million over the course of four, uh, four years or a million dollars per high school over the course of four, four years. And we have some, I think, some good projects slated that we will be bringing to the board in February to review with you as far as those grants go. Lastly is item D, which is the resolution requesting just the General Assembly to amend Tennessee Code Anticipated forty-nine dash six, three one one five to allow school districts to make retention decisions for third and fourth grade students. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. I skipped, I would say, which is a GPS budget amendment. And that is coming out of, um, maintenance of plant, in operation of plant. And that's just moving money from one to the other and it will be equally as we, as we go through there. Um, I've got that on February. So back to the resolution. Uh, I think most of you, we've had some discussion here before. I'm sure that discussion will continue, especially now that the legislature has gone back into session. I do believe this will be something of, of much concern and interest there as they have received quite a bit of feedback from that legislation. Mr. Jones, excuse me, Chairman Jones has some items to give you. I'm going to give you one item as well myself that pertains to the, to, the third grade reading. I'm going to give you the, a copy of the third grade remediation toolkit. And Mr. Jones is giving you some information as well. I've already given that to you, yes. But the reason I gave you that third grade remediation toolkit, if you look at page seven, you can see some of the, um, some of the detailed information in regard to a student who is scoring below expectations or approaching expectations. There's, um, items in here that include tutoring. There's items that include attending to, attendance of a summer program, ninety percent attendance rate. There's an opportunity for an ELA retake, which the significance there is they have to, um, attain adequate growth. And at this time, I'm still questioning what adequate growth is. Does that mean they pass the test or does that mean they score certain form of test? There's quite a bit of more information, I think, that's got to be distributed. It's got to be formulated in regard to this. And I do think that there will be conversations in the legislature and possible changes to this law moving forward. You can also see that the promotion criteria there for students identified for retention, the exceptions. Whether the student has, the exceptions to that, whether a student has already repeated a grade once. If they're an English language learner, if they have a suspected or specified disability. There's a lot of information in here that I think is pertinent to the discussion that we're having in regard to third grade retention. And I would ask, Mr., I would ask Chairman Jones if he wants to add anything to what I just said.
When the test, TCA tests are given this spring, anyone who does not get a score on TCA or any ELA, automatically will be put down as a failure even for six that day. So it's important that we have accurate data. But even beyond that, we're going to make teaching assignments in May and June. And that's going to be based on failure rates for birth creators. And if they take summer school, the assignments could change in August. So it's going to really tie our hands in some things that we do. I think it's important that you reach out to your state legislature. There was a good article in the Kingsport Times-News this morning, Mr. Whitehead, on front page about that. Listening to legislators. And I think that there's two different points of view. One chairman doesn't want to do anything, the other one wants to do something different, uh, kind of in January. So reach out to them. I'm attending a meeting later in February with TSBA. This is on the agenda. And serving, or the directors, we're going to make an effort to, um, density state legislators to make some changes that it will feel better and more with board members. We'll reach out to them and let them know specifics of objections that you have. Those questions that I gave you tonight came from the Tennessee Department of Education. But they're listed well with answers and it's very informative. So if you, if you read those, you may see some things that you disagree with, that you could share with Mr. Lumber and Mr. Garcia and others as, as you talk with them. And also go back and look at the fiscal note that was passed with this law last year. It tells some things that the state had to do. And I'm assuming that they've done all those things. I know they've done a lot of them. I'm assuming they've done all of those concerning tutoring and other things that's listed. But I have a copy of those should someone want a copy. It's about seven pages that's listed. And I can get you a copy later and let you read through those also before it sets up again to do. Now, I'll get a copy later in the meeting and share those with you. But, uh, you know, too often we sit back and let this go through. And it was approved, I think, on January the ninth, two thousand twenty-one. But it was introduced then, I believe. And that's two years ago, two years ago this week, that it was actually introduced. It's just now starting to hit us. And I think it's crucial that we share with our local representatives for our people on this.
I would add to that, um, one of my, I have several concerns, but a very glaring concern is that this third grade group, as kindergartners and first graders spent most of their face-to-face time at home. They were not in school when we were on, uh, in a pandemic. Last year, the second graders, it's their first year where they were in school every day or expected to be in school every day, and we had our doors open every day. And then again, the time that they've spent this year. I think this is a very challenging for this particular group of students. Another challenge that I have is for third graders, generally that is their first experience with a state mandated test. Um, there is the option for school districts to participate in a second grade test. And we have opted to do that this year for the first time because I want our students to have that experience at least one time before taking such a heavy-handed test. There's still lots of questions. And I, I have, I will continue to ask the question. And I still haven't gotten an answer as to, I realize there's a definition in the third grade toolkit there that you have on adequate growth. But somebody has, somebody needs to tell us what is adequate growth? What is a retake? What's it like? And some of the timelines for our third graders to be involved in these situations are difficult. As difficult as that may sound, we have children who have planned surgeries. We have children who have things, you know, that, there are things that can be changed. I realize that and the expectation is parents will just change this and go on and do whatever they're expected to do. But sometimes children have things going on that can't be changed. So how do we, how do we work through those challenges? And, um, I, I don't think the prescription is outlined as well as it should be in that document. And I think, uh, in addition, when we talk about retaining a student, we have to look at lots of impact on that student and what that does to them socially, emotionally, moving forward. And it's not as easy as saying everybody has to pass a test to move to fourth grade. And then even when you get to fourth grade, there's still expectations that you have to make certain criteria before you can even go on to fifth grade. We have students who have challenges with age, who may not have started to school at an old time, who may have been, uh, who may have stayed home an additional year before they started school. To start thinking about these, about students who might be retained, they, they could potentially be nineteen, twenty years old by the time they're seniors in high school. Just lots of things to consider. So I will leave it at that. We've got about six minutes before our board meeting should start. So with your permission, Chairman Jones, I would like to say that we come back at about six thirty-five. Is that going to be okay? And there, um, there are some refreshments since we've been here for this long upstairs. If you all want to very quickly head that way and then we'll try to make it back by six thirty-five.
Let me introduce Carter to you. The director-elect, I guess, would be a good term for him right now.